My apologies. Attorney Corrigan has given me the, the eye. I apologize. No, stuck in another meeting. But that's a good one. Bail hearing, you know. My kids are a little bigger.
Good evening. Today is Monday, September, September 11, 2017, and this is the Housing Committee meeting. The Council President today is the Buy Share Markel of Land, Council District F, and Council District A, Mayor Ortiz. Can I please get a moment of silence? Thank you so much. Can I please get a pledge of allegiance? Thank you so much. Councilors, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from August 21st? Hold on a second, please say aye.
Aye.
There is habit, thank you so much. Today we have two items that we would like to speak. Can I get a motion to get item 33716 out of the table matters?
Second.
Hold on a second, please say aye.
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 There is habit. The item 33717 is a 65 Farias tree, which is basically, we foreclosed on this property and we currently have the previous owners living on the property. And we would like to go through the, through this conversation to see what the city is going to do in terms of providers with an update.
Good evening, Councilors. Brian Corrigan, Assistant City Attorney. Based on our previous discussions, I've, I've reached out to the record owners, or shouldn't say the record owners, forgive me, former owners, the taxpayers, and in fact, I went to visit the property last week. It appeared to be occupied. I knocked on the doors, tried to get somebody to come out and converse, but was unable to, to reach Ms. Yim or her husband, Mr. San. I then followed up with a letter, basically saying that the city, you know, wanted to engage them in a, in agreement whereby they would make a significant payment towards the back tax and then have a payment plan for the balance with an understanding that they were going to, going to be selling the property and paying us off in full at some point in the near future. So I, I remain at a loss on what, what more we can do. You know, at some point, Ms. Yim and her husband, you know, need to, you know, need to come in and work with us here, so.
All right, so, Councilor Ortiz, do you have any updating in terms of this item?
Um, no, this was the update that I was looking for. I know that, um, do, do we have the letter in, in the packet? Or was it emailed to us? Because I, that's what I was looking for, so that way, for, through you.
No, no, sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off. I, I didn't, I didn't submit it. That's, that's my mistake. I will email it to everybody tomorrow. But let me summarize, I basically just, I reiterated what I just said to, to the council, which is that, you know, the city, although we're under no obligation to do so, we are interested in continuing to work with them. We understand that they have secured a down payment. I think I may have referenced $40,000, whether that's accurate or not, or somewhere in the ballpark, but that we would like to engage them in an agreement with a significant down payment, a payment plan with an understanding that they'd be putting the place on the market and, and selling the property and paying us off at that time. So the balance, whatever balance would be left over after the down payment would be secured by a mortgage. The debt would continue to accrue interest at 16%, which is the, you know, statutory rate for back taxes. And, you know, the, the taxpayers would get to, you know, try to preserve whatever equity they have in the house, which is, I think, significant. I mean, it's a, it's a two-family house in a nice area of Lawrence, and the back taxes are somewhere in the area of, I think, $60,000. So, I mean, the value vastly exceeds the amount of tax. I, I hope that they take advantage of this. In the meantime, you know, as I think the council is aware, we, Ms. St. Orange initiated the RFP process. I think, I'm not sure what the deadline is, perhaps Ms. St. Orange could, could bring us up to date, but we've basically put that, that on hold for now to give the taxpayers an opportunity to take advantage of this golden opportunity, for lack of a better term, which again, the city is under no obligation to, to, to provide to them, so. Councilor Ortiz, I don't know if you have some sort of means of contacting them. I will take another ride out there, perhaps tomorrow, see if I can reach them in person. But otherwise, not sure what more we can do.
So I would, Attorney Corrigan, we can, we can do that tomorrow. I can call.
Okay.
I can call right after this.
Yeah.
And even still, I think that there's also, there's, there just seems to be, how do I say this, an inconsistency in, in what they think proper commun- and I, and I say perception, as far as communication is concerned. I, I did speak with them at past, Mr. San, at, at our past meeting, and I said that, that if the city was amicable to it, that I would be contacting them and I would show them proof.
Okay.
And so I think that's also, I think that's, that's why I'm asking the question. Like, I wanted to ask, did you send the letter?
Okay.
Because I thought that I may have missed it in my email, saying that you did that, but seeing as that I didn't receive it, if I could have that.
I, I will definitely send it.
Just send an email and then we can coordinate tomorrow. That would be, that would be.
Sure. Just so.
Whatever, whatever works for you.
Yeah, fine. Just to be clear, I mean, it was really a very, a very short and sweet letter, basically asking them to provide the city with, you know, verification of what, what they are willing to do, but that we are, we're willing to work with them. So I didn't want to like, I didn't want to get into binding the city to any sort of terms at this stage. Once we get to see what, what, what Ms. Yim and her husband, Mr. San, have to offer, what they can prove to us in terms of verified funding for the down payment, and once we have an agreement in place, then, then we'll move forward. I will send you everything tomorrow.
Thank you.
All set.
Hold on. Can you send a new, so you, you're going to be sending a letter again?
No, we're going.
Or can we send a new, a new letter saying, okay, we, we, we met up on the Housing Committee on this day and we would like you to come forward with, you know.
I'll send a follow-up letter tomorrow.
Sorry.
I'll send a follow-up letter tomorrow. I will make an effort to go out to the property, to talk to the Ms. Yim and, and Mr. San, and I will forward those communications to Council Ortiz and, and, and the rest of the committee. And so you'll know exactly what communications we've made.
Sure. So.
So that's it.
He was very committed when he was here in front of us.
Yeah.
To, to get a deal and actually go back to, to be, to become an owner again of the property. So if that's the case, I'm assuming that somehow the commu- the communication haven't happened yet. And if everybody have the right attitude, I think that we should get into an agreement with the, with the former homeowners and be able to have their, help them take their house back.
Okay.
Councilor, there is any other questions? So any requests?
I'm motioning to table. Well, I think that we, we can ask for, well, we're, I, I think that we're committed both now that we're in the same space and understanding that we're on the same page, that we will connect tomorrow. And I will make, do my due diligence in, in connecting with Mr. San, which I have not spoken to him because I had nothing new for him. So we can go from there, and then at the next Housing Committee, we'll have an update and we can request Mr. San to be here also, because I know that he was not requested to be at this Housing Committee meeting.
Oh, he was, well, probably, yes.
Yeah. So there was no communication with that term, and I know at the previous time or any time that he's come, I've, I've reminded him, hey, Housing Committee is today, come. And so I personally did not call him and say, hey, Housing Committee is today, come, because I had nothing new to share with him. But now I know new things have transpired.
Okay. Let's notify the, Mr.
San.
Mr. San, and, and let's get in touch with them. And then once we got the communication open between the two parties, we can have this discussion again.
Okay.
But let's make sure that that happened before we come up again. And I definitely appreciate that for the, you and your department have done in terms of getting, getting in touch with them. And I actually, we'll, I would like to see something happen on this, on this case. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Councilor, there is any other questions on this case?
Motion to table.
Second.
Hold on a second, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have another item on the agenda. Can I get a motion to take item 33616 out of the table matters?
So moved.
Second.
Hold on a second, please say aye.
Aye.
The, the item 33616 is the disposition of 29 Bennington Street. And we have this item in front of us before, it was stable because we were expecting the city attorney and the, and probably Liza, in representation of the task that actually make a decision on the property, to who they're going to be selling it to, to give us an update and probably the process of how this thing, how, how we work. Go ahead with your update.
Yes. Good evening, Councilors. Again, Brian Corrigan, Assistant City Attorney. I have a, just a document that I'd like to share with, with the committee. So, Councilors, this supplements, the document I just produced is the Chapter 30, 30B manual prepared by the Commonwealth Inspector General. This, it's basically excerpts from a very lengthy manual that you can find online easily at the Commonwealth of Massachusetts website. And what I've included here is the chapter that specifically deals with real property dispositions. So this is, this is to supplement the, the opinion letter that, that City Attorney Boddy provided to the council back on August 21st of 2017, in which he essentially summarized the law, which is that, you know, when we have a city-owned property that we, we want to dispose of, there are really two methods by which we can do that. One is the RFP, which is the Request for Proposal. The other is the IFP, which is an invitation for, or IFB, Invitation for Bid. In this particular case, we went with the RFP method. The Invitation for Bid method would be solicitation of basically looking for the highest bid for a piece of property. If we didn't care, we ended up as the owner. We didn't care what they did with the property. We could, under Chapter 30B, dispose of that property by Invitation for Bid and simply say, we're looking for the highest bidder in this case. You know, please, please submit your, your bid. That's not what we did in this case. This is a residential area. It's a single-family home that's been distressed. And so we submitted it to the public under the RFP process. And I, I know Ms. St. Orange has been, been here several times and has explained that entire process to you. I will tell you that Ms. St. Orange has been through training with the state under Chapter 30B. Attorney Boddy's opinion and my opinion is that everything in this particular case was done by the book. So we submitted this property to the public for RFP. The manual gets into some of the specifics of how that's supposed to be done. I will direct you to page 99, which is a couple pages into the excerpt. Step three talks about developing the solicitation. And it speaks to, basically, the criteria that, that you want to put into the RFP. Skipping over to the next page, page 100, gets into specifically the evaluation criteria. And it talks about, so this is, in essence, what this is, is in the case where the city has a particular interest in seeing that something special be done with the property or not done with the property, we put it under this RFP model. And in this case, Ms. St. Orange can get into some of the specifics of, of what the criteria were initially. But I think most importantly, we wanted this to be an owner-occupied property. And so that was very explicit in the RFP. And so we obtained several proposals, and only, I think, a couple of them were for owner occupancy. So the evaluation criteria talks about responsiveness and responsibility, comparative criteria. And again, the, the owner occupancy restriction would fit under any comparative criteria. The gray box on the right-hand side in paragraph, on, on page 100, talks about the establishment of a rating scheme. That's exactly what we did in this case. Again, Ms. St. Orange has been to the training. So she did it exactly as the Inspector General has dictated. We had a number of categories in which we rated the individual proposals as either highly advantageous, advantageous, not advan- not advantageous, or unacceptable. And in each, in each category, the, the proposal was given a score. I believe the scores ranged from 15 down to zero. So for highly advantageous, you'd get a 15. Advantageous, you'd score 10. Not advantageous, you would score five, and unacceptable would be zero. Price was one of the criteria, one of many. So it wasn't, there wasn't the sole. And again, this was not an Invitation for Bid. Cutting to the chase, I know that there's been some contention because the higher, higher bid in this case was not, was not ultimately the winning. I should say, the, the highest price proposal was not the winning proposal. So the proposal submitted by Mr. Garcia and Mr. Martinez had very high scores across the board. Really where they were separ- where they separated from the, ultimately, the winning proposal was in category six, which was the proposed use. And again, we set forth owner occupancy as a significant criteria. The winning proposal by Mr. Navarre and, and Ms. Fernandez was to renovate the property and live in it, whereas Mr. Garcia and Mr. Martinez were buying it for investment. I mean, certainly nothing wrong with that, but when we, we set forth the, the criteria, we have to rate the proposals based on that criteria, and that's exactly what we did. So, so I mean, what this came down to was, you know, and, and by the way, if it hasn't already been stated, the, the, the committee in this case consisted of Ms. St. Orange, myself, Chief of Staff Bernal, Land Use Planner, Mr. McCarthy, and I believe, Mr. Vargas. So I mean, that was, that was the committee. We all got together. We all agreed on the scores for each proposal in each category, and this is what we came up with. You know, I, I don't know what more we can do. I will say that, and I'm not, certainly not suggesting this, in fact, I'm advising against it, but if you skip to page 107, at the very top of that page, this talks about the evaluation process. And it basically says that the, the city is, the city may choose to cancel the proposal process at any time prior to execution of a contract. So, I mean, look, if, if the council wants us to go back to the drawing board on this one, we'll go back to the drawing board. We have the right to do that. I personally don't think that, I think that everything in this case was done by the book. And again, what set Mr. Navarre and Ms. Fernandez apart from Mr. Garcia, Mr. Martinez, and the bread and roses housing proposal, which was also highly scored, was the fact that they planned to live there, and they're local residents. They live right down the street. And that's it. So I, I don't know what more I can say, but I'm happy to answer some, some questions about the legal process.
Councilor, there is a question.
To you.
Sure.
So, it's, oh, thank you. How do we ensure, is that something that's in the RFP process, that the homeowner or the, the, the winning bid, right, the winning proposal, remains a homeowner for X amount of time? Or, let's say, okay, so we go through the process, we approve this, and they renovate, how do we ensure that they're actually living there?
Yeah. Well, we could do that by deed restriction.
And for, and for how long? Because we do have those kinds of restrictions when it comes to getting the first-time homeowner grant.
Absolutely.
We have it for certain ways that we, when they go through different agencies, nonprofit agencies. And so I know, but specific to our city, when you are approved for the first-time homeowner grant, you need to be an owner and remain in the home. You can't sell it, can't rent it, for X amount of time. So is that same stipulation in this RFP, or can we do something like that? Because if we are weighing, and this is just me speculating, if we are weighing the RFP process in this particular case as we want this to be an owner-occupied RFP, and the proposal that will win is going to be an owner-occupied proposal for the betterment, and, and I'm also speculating of why we want that, because the area in which it's in, we want to improve that, that area. And so it's already, its studies have shown that homeowners take care of their homes better than, than those that are absentee landlords. And that's not what we're trying to continue in this area. I'm thinking that that's the, the reason why we're doing this.
Yeah.
But, do you have an answer?
Yeah, so, so part A.
I'm sorry that I answered, asked and answered.
That's okay. That's okay. That was, that was a lengthy question, in several parts. So part A is, do we have something in the actual RFP? I believe the answer is no. We do have that condition or evaluation criteria. So although there's no explicit language in the RFP that there will be a deed restriction, there's nothing preventing us from holding the winning proposal submetee to what they've submitted to the city in terms of a promise. I don't see any reason why we couldn't have a deed restriction of, let's say, perhaps five or maybe 10 years. And we could structure that as, as in many of the cases where you have government financing, there's like a recapture component. So if, if that person were to sell the property during that restricted period of time, they couldn't take the entire profit. They could take a small portion of it, but then the city would recoup. I don't know if that's what we want to do here. Perhaps we might want to have a right of first refusal. So if during that restrictive period, whether it's five or 10 years or something different, before Ms. Fernandez and Mr. Navarre could sell the property, they would have to submit the offer to the city and give us a period of time by which we might want to decide whether we want to buy the property back. I mean, that's how, that's how those first refusal restrictions work. So we could put something like that in there, or we could simply say that the property is to remain owner-occupied as long as it's owned by them. I mean, we could do that. In which case, they could never sell it without coming back to the city, at which point the city would have some say in, in who, who gets to buy it. You know, we would perhaps put a new restriction. We would only release that restriction for another owner-occupied owner of the property. So there are a lot of things we could do. I mean, if, if that's what the council wants us to do, you just let, let me know, and, and the legal department will, will craft that.
I think the intent, I, I think those are a, a lot of good options. I think that, as a counselor, and I have a desire to have owner-occupied homes and so that we do build up areas like the Arlington District that, that's down out through there in Bennington and, and north. And I think that we don't want to seem unattractive to owner-occupied individuals. And so I would think something like five years, the same, would just mirror what we do for our grants. Because the RFP process is a different process and a different way of getting a home. And we don't want to discourage anyone in that process either. We do want more owner-occupied RFPs going through and, and less investments because we want people to build our community.
Absolutely.
So that's the intent behind, behind the, the question. And to, to kind of solidify the fact that this proposal is the winning proposal because it scored more points, because we are specifically looking for owner-occupied. And to make sure that we are, are holding true to that, we're also adding that for the first five years, they can't sell their home.
Yeah. Or perhaps.
In a simple way. I'm just, I mean, I don't know what the verbiage is, but I'm saying around that.
Or perhaps it's that the restriction would be that it has to be owner-occupied.
Or, yeah.
So if at any point in time, they decided they wanted to sell to somebody else, they could not sell to an investor or the city. I mean, it, it creates a, it creates a scenario under which the city has to police the, the deal, you know, going forward. But that's something we could easily do. But I guess more importantly, the question is, are we going to move forward with the winning proposal and execute a contract with these people? Or are we going back to square one? I, that's, that's what I'm curious about.
So do we move forward, whether we, we vote it down or vote it up, without making any kind of adjustments?
My recommendation would be to.
Where would that have to happen in the process, is what I'm asking your legal opinion. Where would that have to happen in the process?
Well, that could happen right now. That could happen tonight. You could, you could vote to approve the RFP evaluation process for this particular property with, with the condition that there'd be a deed restriction going forward for five years, that the property has to be owner-occupied, or perhaps even longer. I mean, I don't see any reason why. It could be. It doesn't, it wouldn't prevent Ms. Fernandez and, and Mr. Navarre from selling the property. It just would keep the property owner-occupied going forward, which I think is what, what you're trying to promote. And there's nothing preventing us from doing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question for you. So basically, we'd like to go.
I have a question for you. So, basically, we'd like to go back a little bit in terms of why we're here today. We're not here today because we, we haven't made a decision whether or not we're going to move forward with the process. We're here today because it was a question in terms of the process, and, and, and there, and there is two of the participants on the, on the, of that, of, of that RFP process that are questioning the, the, the the situation because of the fact that we have done this twice, and we changed criterias based on, based on, they believe that they was based on accommodation. And that's why we're here today. It's not about whether or not we move forward with the process or not. It's because it was a question raised by two legitimate participants on the process, and we would like to get answers about, about those. And if the, if the process was questioned about, and then we got, we have to have an answer for those specific questions. And that's why we're here, just to clarify why we have moved forward with this, with this, with this process. And in terms of that, the first time that we put this property for an RFP, we actually didn't move forward with it for some reasons. And then we have another requirements. And now, it's like a change of plan based on, based on other criterias that not necessarily were evaluated. On, on two of the participant, point of view, that were not necessarily evaluated in a fair way. And perhaps I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you a good example. When we talk about, when we talk about people living in the property, or the owners, homeowner-occupied, if we have first-time home buyers on the process, they have to, they have to leave on the property. If they have a loan that is making them leave on the property, because otherwise they won't be able to get a loan. And, and that could be definitely rated as, as home, or as basically somebody that's gonna leave on the property, if it is a first-time home buyer. So, that's gonna kind of like limit the investors. And at the same time, it's not gonna, it's not giving them the, the the higher rate in terms of the score, just because they're not gonna leave on the property, but they're gonna have somebody leaving on the property that is gonna own the, the, it's gonna own the, the, the property. So, that's why we're here today, because it was a question raised by two of the participants. So, what we should do about that, that's basically my question. The first time we never finished, but somehow they were on top, and they were not on top eventually. And then there was a question raised on that aspect, and then the second time, they were not the higher bidders. It's kind of like, you know, it's, it's, it's like, we would like to clarify that, although how that, how we get to that point.
Okay. I'm gonna ask Ms. St. Ange to talk about what happened with the first round of, of, of RFP, but let me just, I just want to clarify. We're not talking about a problem with the process, are we? I think we've covered, from a legal standpoint, between attorney body's opinion and what I've provided you tonight with the documentation and my explanation, that we did everything by the book. If the question is, in our evaluation process, that's a different story. That's a more subjective, you know, whether we, we rated this one highly advantageous or advantageous or not advantageous, I mean, that's subject to maybe some human-
And why we did it twice, and why we didn't, we changed the criteria in terms of the first one and the second one, and, and so far so-
So, that's not necessarily, that's for Ms. St. Ange to, to discuss.
Good evening, counselors. I'm Ms. St. Ange, Asset Officer, Planning Department. So, we did do this one twice. If you look at the manual, as attorney body indicated, we have an option to cancel the RFP at any time. We decided to cancel this RFP because after the RFP was done, I was told that the original plan was to have an owner occupant, and I neglected to put that in the original application. So, we never evaluated those first bids. We just canceled the, the bidding process completely and started fresh with new criterias.
All right, so, we have the first RFP. We canceled it, but it was after the evaluate, after we did, after you guys did the, the criteria evaluation?
No, we never sat down and evaluated, and we never, we opened the bids, but we never evaluated them. We started fresh because we wanted an owner occupant.
Because of the fact that you guys opened the bid, is that not a violation of the process?
No.
Can I have that, that on, on record?
So, so counsel, the, so the evaluation process is more than-
Not the open the bid process, the part.
I mean, that, that's, that's the beginning of-
Because what I'm, what I'm seeing is, I mean, we have a bid, we open it, and then we cancel. We have, that's kind of like, you know, okay, this is not what I'm looking for in counseling.
Yeah, so-
That's, that can be a question, a legitimate question.
I understand what you're driving at, and so let me, let me answer it this way. I wasn't involved in that initial round in the cancellation, but what I, I think probably happened was there was a very, very preliminary evaluation, and perhaps a recognition that the, all the bids, Ms. St. Ange will confirm or not confirm this, perhaps all the bids that came in, or proposals that came in on that initial round were for investors. And if that was the case, then there's nothing preventing the city from going back to the drawing board and correcting a mistake, as Ms. St. Ange just indicated, that the, the, the occupancy issue was supposed to have been in the, the request for proposal, but was not. So, the law allows the city to, to cancel the RFP at any time prior to execution of a contract.
Prior to open the bidding.
Prior to what?
Prior to open the bidding.
No, no. I, I, I just provided you with the Inspector General's summary, and that's, it cites, it cites a case, the Mengano versus Town of Wilmington case, which is a 2001 appeals court case. There's, i- if, if it's in the interest of the, of, of the city to cancel the RFP, we have the right to cancel the RFP. In this particular case, the, the intent of this disposition was to have an owner-occupied resident owner. And unfortunately, that particular criteria was not included in the initial RFP. So, I don't know who, who submitted proposals under that initial round. Presumably, it was Mr. Garcia and Mr. Martinez were involved in that one as well. I don't know. I've never seen those, I've never seen those proposals, but-
That was part of their complaint. They, they were part of it.
And, and I understand their frustration. They, they-
And there were like probably three more or four more on, on the, on the first one?
All I can tell you is this. This one appears to have been done by the book. I don't know Mr. Garcia or Mr. Martinez at all personally. I don't know Ms., Ms. Fernandez and Mr. Navarre personally. All I know is that one of the criteria that was put into the RFP was, was for owner occupancy, and so that winning bid scored very high on that one, whereas Mr. Garcia and Mr. Martinez scored, scored much lower. And so, even if they had been equal in the scoring, ultimately, that tiebreaker, I think, would have come down to, you know, that, that owner occupancy was a very important component, at least when I was doing the evaluation. So, you know, we just determined that, that was, that was the best way to go.
At the end of the day, what I want to make sure is that the process is clear for everybody in the city, and, and they, they have no, there is no questions to be asked or probably answered. And that's why we're here today. Because there was a question raised by, a legitimate question was raised by two of the participants, and, and, eventually, we would like to make sure, with this process, we would like to make sure that we draw the line in terms of how we perform business, how we do business in the city of Florence.
I think, yeah. I think one thing we're probably learning a lesson from this particular case is going forward. Maybe we need to put something very explicit into the RFP that price is only one, one factor of many, and that you may submit the highest bid price and still lose, because, you know, people may confuse the IFB process and the RFP process. The IFB-
Have we tried that, the higher bidding process before?
We have.
What case?
I haven't, I haven't personally been involved in one, but I know, I mean, attorney body's-
I haven't seen my last, my, my two years of counsel here.
So, um-
You, Liza, do you have any experience with that process?
My personal opinion is that the process that we use is the best process, because it helps the city be selective in what we want to see in the city. Let's say we would have done an IFB for 39 Bennington Street, and the highest bidder was, I'm gonna build a church, no parking, it's a hundred thousand dollars. We would have to take in that bid because it was the highest bidder, whether we like that project or not. The RFP lets the city-
No, because at the end of the day, we have, we have, we have zoning laws in the city, that any, any process-
This is in a-
Any, any, any building that is gonna be built there is gonna, you have to have those requirements.
I, I see that, but 39 Bennington Street, for example, is in a business district, so basically anything could have gone in there.
Yeah, but they have bargaining requirements.
With the request for proposal, we have criterias which allows the city to be selective, allows the city to see, make sure that there's parking, make sure that it's, it's what we want to see, owner occupant. We want to see that single-family rebuild. We don't want to see another business maybe in there. So, it allows the city to be, to get a good proposal. Let's say we would have, we have a hundred thousand properties to sell. We don't have that many property. A lot, other towns do the auction, do the IFB, because they have a lot of properties to sell. We don't come, as you can see, we do a lot of yards, so we don't really do a lot of development. So, this allows us to be selective in what we're bringing into the city.
We, we also need to, need to take into consideration that every time that we do an RFP process, we not necessarily, we not necessarily are taking the higher bidders. But, at the end of the day, sometimes we're losing money. I remember that we picked one, one project that we have fifteen thou, fifty thousand dollars less than the, than the other bidder between the two projects. So, and that, that could means 20 years of tax.
Yeah, and I, I think that particular case, it was a, a nonprofit had the higher bidder. So, you're looking at, at many years of no taxes. So, we, we look at everything. And as Attorney Brian Carrigan indicated, we, we follow 30B by the law. We make sure to do everything how it's written.
No, and I don't doubt that. I just, I just basically have a little bit of financial with this case, because we have two different RFPs together, and we canceled one once we opened the bid. And, and that could be, that could be a, a legitimate questions by the, by the applicants.
Yeah.
That could, they can definitely say, and, and even through the city saying, look, they reject me based on, based on that I was not this and this and that. And it can be a legitimate questions about that. And that's why I raised that question, because it could be a legitimate question, and, and that's why we're here today.
And that's why it's good to have these meetings to clarify and make sure that we're doing everything by the law as, as we-
And, and trust me, I don't, I haven't, I haven't doubt any other particular case that we have here in my last two years, but on this situation, we have two specific processes that if we wanted to be fair to, to, to the applicants, we should clear, we should clear the air up and say, listen, we're gonna open the third one, and this is gonna be the criterias, that's it. Or we're gonna go by the higher bid. If we have this requirement, this requirement, and this requirement before we even put it to bid, because I mean-
And the RFP, it's a big document, and I go over ev, everyone who comes to pick up an RFP, I go over the process. I make sure they know that it's not gonna be the highest bidder. It's, it's the best proposal for the city. So, everybody is very clear on that when we do an RFP.
Counselors, there's another question?
It's from a statement that-
All right, sure.
Through you. So, I, I support the RFP process in general. Sometimes it's an invitation to bid, maybe the right one, but in our city, most, more often than not, we need to be selective. We don't necessarily want an institutional investor to come in here and picking up properties who don't really have any kind of attachment to the city except to make money, and we don't need to be chasing every last dollar. There is a trade-off sometimes. The money's important. Clearly, we get 70% of our funding coming from state aid. It'd be much better if we were more reliant. But we also need to factor other things besides money, which is, do we have people who are looking to purchase and own the place there? We have very, very, our, our ratios from renters to owners is lopsided in our city. So, we really want to increase the homeownership and homeownership rather than renting, for example. So, we want to, and we want to, we want to do what we can to try to increase that. So, overall, the RFP process is a healthy process. It's a good process. It was the right process for this one. And I've been on the council, I've been on the House Committee for several years. I don't recall many invitations to bid. Most, almost all RFPs, but I will say this. This is not an unusual circumstance when individuals who don't get, or aren't selected, aren't happy with the process. This is a very typical situation where they're gonna say, well, this happened, and this happened, mine was better. And what we've heard this evening, it is a subjective. We have people who have to make decisions. Human beings are making valuations as to whether or not is this better, is this meet this, and there's some subjectivity to those reviews. And so, we have to acknowledge that, and people are fallible, we're perfect, but what I might think is a better one for, I don't know, for a development, may not be what someone else thinks is a really good. So, we have that kind of maybe tension at the, these meetings to say, this is what I think, but at the end, we, what we're seeing is people come around and say, this is what we want to see happen. So, I think, I think that's good, and I think we have to be also be a little bit careful, because if we start going down the road of, of you didn't do things the right way, you're really doing it, we're actually making it out, and, and very kind of a underlying allegation of you being fraudulent. You didn't do things the right way. You didn't do things by the book, and you are, you're picking and choosing, and we gotta be careful. I don't think we are intending on saying it, but if we go to its logical conclusions, that's kind of what we're saying. So, and I know that we're not saying that deliberately here this evening. I know that we have a lot of respect for the city officials that do this, and I think that needs to be said. So, I just wanted to give my two cents in, in support of this. I think it's important that we review this thing, and I think it's important that bidders, people who submit proposals, understand what that means, and when you've got five bids, four people aren't gonna be happy. Only one's gonna be happy when they get that bid, and that's the reality. But they need to understand that it's not just about the dollar. And there's other things, and I think that if, if you could take this evening, I heard it already, if you could take a couple of points there to refine and make improvements on the process, setting expectations and allowing people to understand, when this is done, this is what we're looking for, I think is helpful. It may not, we will still, a year from now, there'll be somebody else coming in here through this process saying, we were rooked. We had it, we didn't get it, and now there's something underhanded going on, and we're never gonna totally get away from that. We have to understand that. But as long as we have confidence that we're doing things the right way, and thank you for, for giving us the documentation that gives the city the rights that we read on page 107, and you're, you're, you're citing the Mengano versus Town of Wilmington case from 2001, which is, talks about what we, and here's what it says. We need to do things, we, city, the best interest of our local jurisdiction. What's in the best interests of the city? And that's what it says here in this thing. And so, in our best interest is getting homeowners and people there. The only question I have on this one is that, we have this folks from the, the Niviers and Fernandez. and Fernandez, they say that they have made other improvements and repairs in little other houses. Do you, when we make those allegations, do we ask for proof? Like what houses did you do, where, can you show us pictures? Do we, do we do the follow-up?
With this particular case, they gave me, um, addresses of properties that they've, um, repaired, so I looked them up and they're in good condition, so, um, they weren't not part of the package, but I did follow up with that.
And when they signed this application, are they attesting us to the pains and penalties of perjury? Is everything that's on there, I ha, I mean, they, they, they are, they are proposing that everything that they're saying here is truthful and lawful, right?
Yes.
So they could, if they, if this is found not to be so, they are in violation of, of, uh, making a fraudulent document, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
The councilor, there's any other question?
I'm not sure what the motion is, are we looking to move this up at this point? Is that the request?
Oh, well, um-
Where are we on this, I'm not sure through you, what's, what's, where are we on this process?
I would like the full council to have some say about the, about this property, so I, I have no problem sending it with no recommendation as a committee report.
Uh, the committee chair is recommending that I make a proposal to send this out without a recommendation, which I'm fine with, to get it to the full council. That's my motion.
Second?
Alright, there is a motion on the table, uh, properly second. The motion is to send it to the full council with no recommendation as a committee report, right?
Yeah, no recommendation, full council.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Lisa, do you have any other, um, item on the agenda that you would like to speak about today?
I, I do not, not at this time. I will have, um, the next housing committee meeting, I, I'm working on our report for compliances, um, but I will have the next housing committee meeting.
Okay. Alright, thank you so much. Uh, councilor, there is any other, um, item on the agenda that you would like to speak about today, tonight?
Chairman, I, I am looking for a document that I'd like to pull up, it's 77 South Union Street.
That's the booming house?
Oh, yeah.
Booming house. We're due for another review, maybe in December, and I just wanna get things lined up. I'm looking for that document right now, if you see it, let me know.
I know what it is.
Yeah, I know it's in here.
I do see it. I'd like to take document two seventy-four twelve off the table.
Um, there is a motion on the table?
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Uh, very briefly, this is a, this discusses conditions, 77 South Union Street, last December, we actually had, um, various city agencies come here to give us an update. I am hearing that conditions are, once again, uh, are, are getting worse. And so I, I think we just need to get, um, the proper officials back again. I just, I wanna give them a little bit of time, we don't need to have the next meeting, I do wanna give them a little bit of time to get their paperwork put together. So I'm looking to maybe do something in maybe October or November, uh, it's been about a year, so it's, it's time.
Councilor, um, do you have a motion?
The motion will be to send invitations to the inspectional services department, the fire department, and the police department to provide for the housing committee an overview, come to the committee and give us overview of the conditions and their actions at 77 South Union Street, I just don't have a date for that yet.
Um, anytime in November?
Could do November, November? I don't, yeah, it's fine.
November, mid, mid-November?
Um, why don't we do it at our first housing committee meeting in, in November? I know things are getting a little crazy for a lot of people up until then, we can wait till after.
What day is it, September eleventh, so we're giving them two months?
Sure.
So, probably-
Why wouldn't we do a month from now and then they can follow up with a month?
I don't wanna bring, I, I don't wanna bring them in twice, I just wanna bring them in once to get a comprehensive overview.
So we're gonna have a full council meeting on the Sep- no.
Cause do we wanna leave it on-
Probably on the twenty, on the fourteen. We're gonna have a November fourteenth, right?
Pardon me?
Um, the first, the first meeting on November, when is it gonna be?
I mean, the last meeting that we had on this was December, I'd like to give it a full year, sort of a full thing, and so I'm trying to cut, I'm trying to balance this, we could do it next month, but we can, I, I don't wanna do it December either, it gets too late, so I'm trying to find some-
So let's do, let's do it in November, mid-November.
Okay, so November fourteenth?
Yeah.
We usually have it on a Monday, don't we? We usually have our meetings on Monday nights?
Oh, the, the thirteenth, yeah, November thirteenth.
Okay, so you're gonna call a meeting for that night, that would be good and that'd be great, so that, that's my motion, to invite them to the November thirteenth housing committee meeting.
Yes, and, uh, can you amend me your motion to include any other booming house that they, uh, the owner from 77 South Union Street owns in the city of Florence, because I, I think that they own the, the one in Green Street as well.
Uh, sure, so the motion would also include, uh, whoever is the owner of 77 South Unit for an update on the other property, other rooming properties that he, that I believe is a gentleman, that he has in the city, an update on that as well, those other properties.
Alright.
It'll be a long evening, but, um, because if we're gonna go, if he, I think they got Common Street, he's got a property there, I think he owns that, I think.
I think he owns three, like three of them.
So-
Alright, so there is a motion on the table?
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So, um, we're gonna have a meeting on the thirteenth, so basically we, can we call the meeting for the thirteenth right now?
Sure.
Then I'll have a permission.
Yeah, something changes, it changes.
Because I mean, uh, what I'm gonna scare off is that we're gonna have, uh, a meeting on, in October and then, and then, then we're just having a lot of house, of that meeting. If we call it that, if we call it right now.
So we certainly, you, the chairman, you can certainly call for a meeting on that date?
Yeah.
So I'm fine with that.
Um, we can, should we do a draft motion or just call?
You, you, you call the chair, you can just call the meeting and that, and that's fine, that's fine, we're good.
Yeah, definitely, let's call the meeting for the talking.
We'll, we'll, we'll say we're gonna show up, so we'll be there and we'll-
I'll send them to, to the reason tomorrow to make sure that we have a meeting on the thirteenth. Alright, councilors, there is any other, um, item on the agenda that would like to speak tonight? Okay, can I get a motion to a John?
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you so much.